Okay, everybody ready?
Yeah.
One more time. I would like to call the final city council meeting of the year 2012 to order for December the 18th, 2012. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray, here. Boudreaux.
Here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Petty.
Here.
Tennant.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here. Would you join in reciting the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight, I would like to introduce Shay Hoppers, Woodland Junior High, eighth and ninth grade class that's going to be here observing us tonight. Would you all stand and be recognized, please? The next order of business is somewhat, a little bittersweet for the mayor because tonight we say goodbye to three council members that collectively, they represent 24 years of experience on this council. And you get in this office and you always tell yourself when you're the mayor that you won't get attached to people. You won't get attached to the staff or you won't get attached to the council people, but I did. And the council people tonight, Sarah Lewis has been on the council four years and Bobby Farrell has been on the council eight years and Brenda Teal has been on this council 12 years. Brenda Teal and I, we came on the council together, 2001, and then Bobby and Sarah, and their service has been excellent for this council. Some of the things that we experienced, and I will not go back the whole 12 years because we passed a lot of groundbreaking legislation in the last 12 years. And in the last four, we, these three council members along with this council faced down probably the worst natural disaster this city's ever seen, and we got through it in three months. This council probably saw the worst recession since the depression, and we got through that. This council passed the first balanced budget that I can ever remember since I've been an elected official. This council passed Streamside Protection Order, it's the first one in the state of And these aldermen were very important in those decisions. And they have been a great service to this city. I will certainly personally, as I cannot speak for the rest of the council, the staff and the citizens will certainly miss you, but at the same time, we wish you well. Now, I have a few plaques to give out.
I will, would the alderman like to say anything?
Well, I will. I'd just like to say it's been an absolute pleasure and honor to serve the citizens of Fayetteville for the last 12 years. Whoops, now I'm gonna get cherry, I wasn't gonna do it. It's been a pleasure to serve with Lionel for 12 years and Don for whenever we served together and everyone else on this council. And some that are gone, you know, that are not on the council anymore that I really enjoyed working with. And the citizens of Fayetteville are just wonderful. This town's wonderful, I've lived here all my life, and it's been such an honor to be able to do this. And I'll miss it.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would just say it's been my high honor and privilege to serve the citizens of this community. It's been a real learning experience. This august body has had, has today many wonderful people that have, that are sitting here, that have offered to their time to serve the citizens of Fayetteville as we have had during my eight years in the, on the council. And I just say it was a high honor and privilege, I'm happy that, I'm happy that I was able to do that.
I will say a few things as well. I want to thank the citizens of Ward Four and the citizens of Fayetteville for the opportunity to have served this community. And, I had to breathe for a minute. And that I too have learned and what an honor it has been to serve and work with the staff and work with the mayor. And I have learned so much from you, Mayor, and thank you for, I've said this before, helping this council be such a professional council and working together and getting to decisions and making such progress. And it's such an opportunity, it's been such an opportunity to serve with such wonderful people and who are visionary people. And this community supports people in that role, and I really have been thankful to get to be a part of that. And so, I recommend it. I think that you should try this because it is a really great experience, so and I will miss it. Thank you.
Sir, if you'd like to come down? These will be the plaques. You should be in the house. Apparently, one more thing to say. It's fine. You're not. Great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council or anything on this?
Just thank you very much for that.
Again, I want, I want to thank Alderman. Alderman Farrell, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say one more thing, two things. One thing, you talked about the times we were through, and I will never forget when we had the storm. And I was lucky or unlucky enough to be on the request for proposal for the people to come in and clean up. And the weather here was treacherous and it was terrible, and you could not beat that guy in here. You could get here earlier, you could come late, and you couldn't beat him or outstain. But, one more thing, when I first got here, eight years ago, this little Kool-Aid pitcher was in the back, and it had one drink of Kool-Aid in it. And I have never drank it. It's still back there. It's a real Kool-Aid pitcher. So, I'm gonna go ahead and get rid of this tonight.
Eight years, get rid of that Kool-Aid. Oh, how funny. That's great. We have a couple of proclamations we would like to read now. And who is the keeper of the proclamations? Does anybody know?
No.
Alrighty then. I have a printed copy, I do not have the proclamation. Did anyone pick up the proclamations?
They will be delivered after.
Okay. The proclamation keeper. Everybody hang, we will do the proclamations in a moment. Let's, let's move along to the city council meeting presentations, reports and discussion items. Tonight, we have Illinois River Watershed Partnership presentation. Do you have, Hawk's gonna do that for us? Detective Director, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. It's a privilege to be here representing the Illinois River Watershed Partnership, and we wanted to thank the city of Fayetteville for contracting with our organization to provide education services for your residents as part of the Clean Water Act. But not only is that just something that you're doing, it's something you very much believe in, and you're taking leadership throughout the watershed. And it's so important to us as an organization that the city of Fayetteville is our partner right here in the headwaters near the Illinois River where it starts in Hogaye. And we want to thank you for the rain gardens that you allowed us to install this year at Wilson Park and at Holt Middle School. We conducted our Rain Garden Academy here at the Fayetteville Town Center and one at Holt Middle School for teachers as well. We planted trees along creeks and streams in our riparian project last spring, and we're looking forward to our sixth year on March 9th. And we're just real thankful for the partnership. We did 25 schools with the Clean Water Rangers program, over 7,000 students with watershed education, and that would not be possible without the contract for services with you. So, we want to present you with this, is a picture of how a watershed works from our Clean Water Rangers program, and thank you very much. And I did want to mention that we're very excited to have Dr. Lewis, Sarah Lewis, join our board this last November 1st as one of our three new board members out of a 30-member board, and we're excited for her representation and all the work that you all have done here in Fayetteville. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And thank you for all the work that you do as well. Okay. The next order of business is, we will go back to the first order of business, which I have two proclamations to give tonight on behalf of the city of Fayetteville to the Fayetteville High School volleyball team winning the state. Yes. Let's do this, that proclamation first. And who will be receiving the proclamation?
The whole team. Let's have the whole team come up.
Absolutely. The whole team. Bring the whole team up. Line up right there, I'm gonna read this, and then I'll bring it down to you. They have the mayor's large plan. Okay. Well.
All right. Roll podium, roll podium.
Go to the podium.
There you go.
And the proclamation says, whereas the Fayetteville High School Bulldog volleyball team is undefeated, I like that, undefeated in 7A West Conference action, is top ranked in the state, and is the championship volleyball team of the state of Arkansas. And whereas the Fayetteville High School Bulldog volleyball team lives its motto, "We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence is not then an act, but a habit." And their state championship win turned their season mantra of the unfinished business into a showing in Arkansas and in the nation that they are the business and that they leave nothing unfinished. The Fayetteville High School Bulldog volleyball team is a successful and bright gem that makes all of Fayetteville, Arkansas proud. And whereas the American Volleyball Coaches Association has named the 2011-2012 FHS volleyball team as the recipient of the AVCA Team Academic Award, to qualify teams must maintain a 3.3 grade point average, and the Bulldogs exceeded that with a 3.7 GPA. Yeah. And whereas the FHS volleyball team is blessed with superior coaching staff, with two first-team All-Southeastern Conference honorary and University of Arkansas's first All-American coach, Jessica Phelan, leading the team to excellence, and assistant coach Chris Clark and volunteer coach Sarah Kincaid providing coaching to raise this team up to further excellence. And whereas to the state champions, the Fayetteville High School Volley Dogs, we appreciate you, we praise you, and we thank you for dedicating yourselves to excellence and again allowing Fayetteville, Arkansas to be a winner through your talents. Now, therefore, I, Lionel Jordan, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 18th, 2012, as Fayetteville High School State Championship Day in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and I encourage all citizens, civic and fraternal groups, educational association, news media and other community organizations to join in this tribute to Volley Dog pride in our state champions.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this is the first time a 7A team has went back-to-back in the history of the state of Arkansas, is that correct? This is the first time. Yeah. I will have to admit, the mayor does like winning. And I want to read this proclamation. Whereas the Fayetteville Bulldog Football Team won the 2012 state championship game and became the first and only 7A team to win back-to-back state championships. And whereas appreciation is given to the Booster Club, its president David and Rachel Tromble, coach Darrell Patton, superintendent Vicki Thomas and the entire school board and faculty, staff, students in our community for their support of the Fayetteville Bulldogs. And whereas the Bulldogs won their first football state championship in 2007, making this the third football state championship won by FHS Football Bulldogs in five years. And whereas the members of the 2012 Fayetteville Bulldogs Football Team demonstrated character, faith and relentless determination for capturing the Class 7A state championship, achieved that goal and thereby brought honor to Fayetteville High School as well as to the citizens of the city of Fayetteville. And whereas, on behalf of the city of Fayetteville and its citizens, we wish to recognize the outstanding achievement and sacrifices of every member of the Fayetteville Bulldog Football Team in winning the 7A state championship game. We want to recognize, commend and express appreciation for the tireless efforts of the many supporters, recognize the members of the Fayetteville High School Cheerleaders and Dance Team for their inspirational leadership, and recognize the marching band who led the charge in providing the spirit for the 2012 Fayetteville Bulldogs. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize and celebrate the members of the 2012 Fayetteville Bulldogs Football Team and their superior performance during the 2012 football season and the state championship game. Now, therefore, I, Lionel Jordan, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December the 18th, 2012, as Fayetteville High School State Championship Day in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and encourage all our citizens, civic and fraternal groups, educational association, news media and other community organizations to join in this tribute to the Purple Dog pride in our state champions. Thank you all. The next order of business is the Historic District Commission appointment, appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council.
The nominating committee would like to submit the names of Christine Myers and Will Watson to unexpired terms ending 6/30/15.
We have a motion in a second?
Yes. Did we do that back?
Did you get that?
We already have motions.
Okay. Just making sure. I mean, a motion in second to approve the appointment of the Historic District Commission appointees. Any discussion on that? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray. Yes. Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Now, I have on my agenda, it says number three, Nominating Committee Report, is that correct, Adella?
As usual, we had many, many wonderful applicants, and we had only four out of our huge number that we didn't place, and so, we're very pleased with that. For the Airport Board, we would like to recommend Marty Burgraph, one member, term ending 12/31/17, Bob Nichol, one term ending 12/13. The Audit Committee had no applications, and we had one opening, and so, Adam Motherwell agreed to continue serving until there are more applications. Botanical Gardens Society of Ozarks, Joyce Mendenhall, we appoint, we would like to recommend, one term ending 12 of 15. Civil Service Commission, we would like to recommend Warren McDonald, one term ending 3 of 17. Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeal, Bucky Jones, ending 3/13, and Jules Beck, ending 3/13. Environmental Action Committee, we would like to recommend Terry Lane, one term ending 12/15, Aubrey Shepherd and Mike Emery, terms ending 12 of 15. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we would like to recommend David Prophet, one term, actually, all three terms will be ending 12/15. David Prophet, Philip Watson and Charles Maxwell. Urban Forestry Advisory Board, we recommend four people, all terms ending 12/31/14. Henry Gaston, a tree service community, term ending 12/14. Malcolm Lavois, Senator Sue Madison, Almer Laney. This concludes our nominating committee report. And I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve the nominating committee report and all the appointments. Any comments on it? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay, number four, Public Facilities Board Adjustments and Term End Date Approve.
I move that the city council confirm the following appointments made by Mayor Jordan as successor members of the Fayetteville Public Facilities Board to serve the respective terms. One, Steve Adams, five-year term expiring December 18th of 17. Philip Taylor, four-year term expiring December 18th, 16. Stephen Cosby, three-year term expiring December 18th, 2015. Tommy Dewise, two-year term expiring December 18th, 2014. And Steve Clark, one-year term expiring December the 18th, 2013.
We have a motion in second to approve the Public Facilities Board appointments. Any comments on it? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay. Next order of business is the approval of Alderman City Council Committees. I believe Chief Staff has this.
Mayor Jordan has made appointments that we've communicated to each of the returning and newly elected council members. I'm going to read the full list and then would like for one member of the council Ward 2, Marty Schottmeyer, representing Ward 3, and Alan Long, representing Ward 4. The other committee appointments, which I believe from the clerk's office, are made by the mayor that, and this is just informative, doesn't require council approval, Nominating Committee, Adella Gray, Ward 1, Mark Kenyon, Ward 2, Justin Tennant, Ward 3, Rhonda Adams, Ward 4. And the Ordnance Review Committee, Sarah Marsh, Ward 1, Matthew Petty, Ward 2, Marty Schottmeyer, Ward 3, and Alan Long, Ward 4. And then the other committee appointments for the council, the Active Transportation Advisory Committee would be Alan Long. The Advertising and Promotion Commission would be Justin Tennant and Matthew Petty. The Audit Committee, Adella Gray. The Environmental Action Committee, Sarah Marsh. The Washington County Regional Ambulance Authority, Marty Schottmeyer and Chief Day Ringer. The Equipment Committee, representing Ward 1, Adella Gray, Ward 2, Matthew Petty, Ward 3, Marty Schottmeyer, Ward 4, Rhonda Adams. And the Town and Gown Advisory Committee, Mark Kenyon. And then the council member on the Northwest Regional Planning Commission would be Matthew Petty.
Okay.
I move we approve these.
We have a motion and a second to approve the council committees. Any final comments from the council? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the Consent Agenda. Number one, bid number 12-76, Peterbilt Ford Smith. Resolution awarding bid number 12-76 and authorizing a contract with Peterbilt Ford Smith in the amount of $499,366 for the purchase of two front-load refuge trucks for use by the Solid Waste Division and approving a budget adjustment. Number two, bid number 12-77, Torex Equipment Services. Resolution awarding bid number 12-77 and authorizing a contract to Torex Equipment Services in the amount of $83,284 for the purchase of two heavy-duty 4x4 pickup trucks for use by the Fire Department. Number three, natural trail naming at Lake Federal Environmental Studies Center. Resolution approving the names of Lakeside Trail, Hilltop Trail, Old Field Trail, and Wagon Wheel Cut Off for Trails within the Lake Federal Environmental Studies Center area. Number four, federal and state law enforcement forfeiture revenue. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $133,320, representing federal and state law enforcement forfeiture revenue received during the third and fourth quarters of 2012 and establishing the corresponding expense budget. Number five, Federal Police Department donation revenue. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,600, representing donation revenue to the Federal Police Department during the third and fourth quarters of 2012 in support of general recognition and officer service awards. Number six, Community Services Division donation revenue. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in total amount of $1,968, representing citizen donation revenue for the Rangers Pantry Pet Food Bank and donation revenue from the Fraternal Order of Police for the Senior Giving Tree Event. Number seven, Community Development Block Grant Housing Program. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in the amount of $2,218, representing a Community Development Block Grant Housing Program lien payoff. Number eight, Rule D for reconsideration. A resolution to amend D Procedures and Parliamentary Rules, subsection four, reconsideration of the City Council Rules of Order and Procedures, to clarify that only a council member who voted on the prevailing side can move to reconsider a motion. Number nine, post issuance tax compliance procedures. Resolution to authorize and adopt post issuance tax compliance procedures to be followed in connection with each issue of tax exempt bonds by the city. Number 10, Beaver Water District Agreement. Resolution approving an agreement with Beaver Water District related to protection of and nutrient reduction in the Beaver Lake watershed. That's all. We have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda is read. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, we have none. C, Public Hearing. Number one, raising and removal, 320 West North Street, resolution ordering the raising and removal of a dilapidated and unsafe structure owned by Robert W. Wilks located at 320 West North Street in the city of Federal, Arkansas, and approving a budget adjustment. I will now open it up for public hearing. I see Staff has...
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Chad Ball. I'm the Code Compliance Administrator for the city. And for the public and for our guests here, I want to go over briefly our code compliance program. We are charged with enforcing unsightly unsanitary conditions, also codes pertaining to inoperable vehicles, and unsafe buildings. And we're here today to go over a unsafe building violation. Now, code compliance, we respond to, on average, 4,000 requests throughout the year, and very rarely do they come to this council level, but we are here now to go over a resolution ordering a raise and removal of a dilapidated structure at 320 West North Street. We, code compliance responded to a request concerning the structure. We went, we did an initial inspection, we got the chief building official over to also do an inspection. Our chief building official, he inspected it, and he determined that it is in violation of unsafe building code. He observed major deterioration of the house. He also found the roof to be soggy, the soffit rotting out, and a section of the interior walls that were rotting and exposed some interior sections of the house. So, major repairs will have to be made to be brought up to city code. Code compliance received, or they sent a notice of violation to the property owner, explaining to them that they will need to have 30 days to raise the structure or obtain proper permits to fix the structure. We also issued and delivered a notice of public hearing that let the property owner know about this public hearing right now. We are asking that you approve the resolution, also approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $4,875 that will be placed as a lien onto the property if the city does go ahead and raise the structure. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for the chairman? Okay, who would like to address this from the public? Anyone? Okay, I will close the public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to point out that the staff has also provided the city council with numerous photographs in our packet showing the dilapidated status of this house and why it does need to be fixed or removed.
Okay, I will, what questions does Council have? Sarah, did you have?
My question has to do with when you, the city, and this is, this may not apply in this case because they may make a change, but when the house is raised, what happens to the materials?
That was a question, I think, from a couple of years ago that you brought up, and in response to that, we have added in our bid packet that our bidders, to encourage them to use different waste diversion methods to end their bidding, so we're asking them to hopefully use different waste diversion methods than just all of it in the landfill. So, we are requesting the bidders to do that as well.
Great. I drove by, and there's some great rock that could be reused too if it goes down, so it's too bad because it's a cute place.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Chad.
Okay, we've heard from staff.
As you were, there is a resolution before the city council, and I guess the appropriate thing would be to move, to pass the resolution if you believe this building must be raised and removed.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any other comments, questions from the council? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, number one, RZN 12-4250, rezone. Parks and Recreation Ordinance Rezoning Properties Described and Rezoning Petition, RZN 12-4250, for 14 city of Federal parks and trail corridors on approximately 110.91 acres located throughout the city from multiple zoning districts to P1 institutional.
Bid ordained by the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, hereby changes the zone classification following described properties as follows, from RA, residential agricultural, residential single-family four units per acre, residential multifamily 24 units per acre, residential office, thoroughfare commercial, general industrial, downtown core, neighborhood commercial, RPZD, and institutional, no, 2, P1 institutional, as shown on Exhibits A1 through A-14, and as referenced in the respective warranty deeds found on Exhibit B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 2, the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Federal, reflects the zoning change provided in Section 1 above.
Okay, which staff has this?
Mayor and Council, the city park staff brought this application forward, and city plan reviewed it, took it to the planning commission. This is 14 different city parks and trail corridors. If you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we went through a very similar process to rezone the properties to institutional, to make them all consistent. As noted in the ordinance enacting this particular action, there are numerous zoning districts. When we receive parkland into the city through dedication or acquisition, they're generally zoned whatever the property, underlying property is owned at the time. And so, what that, what this action does for us is creates more consistency for setbacks if we're building a pavilion, for signage purposes if we're putting in a new sign for that particular park. So, it helps in that endeavor in obtaining permits and really looking at what we're utilizing that space for. All of these areas are intended to be or currently developed for future parks or trails throughout the city, and we are recommending that all of them be rezoned to the institutional zoning district. The planning commission also recommended this action with a vote of 8 to 0.
What questions do we have for staff on this? Okay. Let me get your public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue? See, now bring it back to the council, we have a motion and...
Second.
Second.
To go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Lewis? Yes.
And ordinance rezoning the properties described in rezoning petition, RZN 12-4250, for 14 city of Federal parks and trail corridors on approximately 111 acres located throughout the city from multiple zoning districts to P1 institutional.
I move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Third, third and final.
Third and final reading?
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Lewis? Yes.
And ordinance rezoning the properties described in rezoning petition, RZN 12-4250, for 14 city of Federal parks and trail corridors on approximately 111 acres located throughout the city from multiple zoning districts to P1 institutional.
Any final comments from the council on this? Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
It is a season. All right, number two, RZN 12-4253, 1932 and 2052, South Garland Avenue Life Source. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 12-4253, for approximately 3.64 acres, located at 1932 and 2052, South Garland Avenue, from RSF4 residential single-family four units per acre, and I-1 heavy commercial and light industrial to P1 institutional. Yep?
Bid ordained by the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, hereby changes the zone classification of following described property from residential single-family four units per acre and heavy commercial and light industrial to P1 institutional, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached here to and made a part hereof. Section 2, that the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, hereby amends the official zoning map of the city of Federal, reflects the zoning change provided in Section 1 above.
This is also a city-owned property. It's about 3.6 acres east of Garland Avenue, north of Cato Springs Road. The request was actually submitted by my staff in the Community Services Division. This property is managed by our Community Development Block Grant Program. Funds are utilized on that property for two different facilities, one of which is, has been utilized since the 1980s for the Head Start Facility. We have used those federal funds to make improvements to these structures and properties for a number of years, and in order to allow for generally nonprofit organizations based in Federal that provide programs and services to families in need. The city is requesting to rezone this property, again, for consistency's sake. We have a piece of property that's zoned to two different things, probably the most incompatible things you could have, one next to each other, residential single-family and light industrial, and the property's not used for either one. And so, we're requesting this property be rezoned for institutional use, again, to allow for these types of facilities to go into those buildings and hopefully help families in need. The planning commission also voted 8 to 0 in favor of this request.
What questions we have for Jeremy on this?
Jeremy, were you able to find out anything about this saying in Berry Inter?
I did. It's actually still zoned RSF4. It was not brought forward with the Parks Department request, so it's something that I'll have my staff look into just for future use of that site as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? What public comment do we have on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council. Motion and a second to go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 12-4253, for approximately 3.64 acres located at 1932 and 2052, South Garland Avenue, from residential single-family four units per acre, and heavy commercial and light industrial to P1 institutional.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
And ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 12-4253, for approximately 3.64 acres located at 1932 and 2052, South Garland Avenue, from residential single-family four units per acre, and heavy commercial and light industrial to P1 institutional.
What final comments do we have from the council? Okay. Saunders, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Okay, number three, Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract for Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated in a total amount of $29,475.65 to configure and program existing radio equipment for implementation of a conventional backup radio system. Yep?
Whereas the city's Motorola Somnacast radio project was completed in 2012, and whereas the city sought and was granted five additional radio frequencies from the Federal Communications Commission for future expansion of the project, and whereas the city desires to use these frequencies and old radio equipment, which will create a conventional radio backup system, and whereas Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated is uniquely qualified to program and configure the equipment due to its familiarization with it, and further, Smith Two Way Radio, Inc., is the only company in Northwest Arkansas authorized to program city radios on the Arkansas Wireless Information Network. Now therefore, it being ordained by the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, Section 1, that the city council of the city of Federal, Arkansas, hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract with Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated in the amount of $29,475.65 to configure and program existing radio equipment for implementation of a conventional backup radio system.
Chief?
Thanks, Mayor. As you guys will remember, earlier this year, we completed our upgrade of our radio system to AWIN, which is the statewide system. Well, after we done that, we realized that we still have our old tower that we had used in the past sitting on Mount Robinson, and that would be a good backup for AWIN should it ever go down for whatever reason. You know, some server in Little Rock could go down, we could have a tornado, any natural disaster. So, what this money is for is to reprogram all 600, and I don't remember the exact number, around 650 city radios where they would work on our tower that's on Mount Robinson. And that way, should AWIN ever go down, all we do is turn the dial on our radio, and we're back in business. in Northwest Arkansas, and that's why we didn't bid it. The next closest one is in Little Rock.
Questions for the, yes, just?
So you use the same handhelds, it'll just be a reprogramming.
That's correct. Handhelds and mobiles.
Yeah, so no new equipment.
That's correct.
Great.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay. What public comment do we have on this one? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents to configure and program existing radio equipment for implementation of a conventional backup radio system.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Smith Two Way Radio Incorporated in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and sixty-five cents to configure and program existing radio equipment for implementation of a conventional backup radio system.
Any final comments from the council on this?
I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, related to in the future, is this revisited regularly or how is that?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of what you said.
And so is this revis, are the frequencies up, is that an updated, is that updated regularly? Are the, the equipment, is that on a periodic review or is it?
I'm not sure I exactly understand your question. What, what happened was, we applied for five additional licenses when we put in the new radio system for expansion and those kind of things, and we were able to get those additional frequencies. So with those additional frequencies, we can do a couple of things. We can either just save them so when we need to upgrade AWIN for additional channel, we can use them there, or in this case, what we're gonna do is use them to, for this backup system. Now, what that would do is we have five additional frequencies, so we would have five frequencies. Should AWIN go down, we would have five frequencies on the old system we could use. If it ever got to a point on AWIN where we needed another fire channel, another police channel, we would take one of those and put into AWIN, and that would only leave us four backup channels.
Okay, so it's just as needed, not regularly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? No, any final comment? Okay.
I move we suspend the rules. Are we on the third reading?
We're there, we're there. I'm just waiting, making sure. Sandra, would you please call?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast, simulcast radio system. Whereas the city's Motorola simulcast radio project was completed in two thousand and twelve, and whereas Motorola Solutions Incorporated provides factory-authorized training, field technical representation services, and other technical supports to provide maintenance on the Motorola simulcast system, and whereas due to the complexity of the system and the Motorola Solutions Incorporated's unique knowledge of the technical aspects of the system and how it connects to the Arkansas Wireless Network, it is necessary for them to provide the necessary maintenance for the system. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore waives requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a two-year contract with Motorola, Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the mo, city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Thank you. When we upgraded our new radio system, some of the equipment we had that we'd bought more recently was able to be switched over to AWIN with a reprogram. So because of that, the warranty is expiring at two different times. Some of it expires at the end of this year, and then the new equipment we bought expires at the end of the next year. So that's the purpose for a two-year contract. That way, it'll get everything expiring at the same time, and all the equipment will be on the same warranty schedule. Like I said earlier, Motorola is the only one that AWIN's authorizes to work on their system, and that's why they request for waiving the bid.
What questions do we have for chief on this? Exciting radio.
Important.
Yes, important.
Important.
All right. What public comment do we have on the Motorola Solutions Incorporated? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Any final comments from the council on this?
Might be worth twenty, this is a budgeted amount, it's not a surprise, it's not a change, it's not an adjustment, this is just...
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. If there's not any other final comments, Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the mo, city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Thank you. When we upgraded our new radio system, some of the equipment we had that we'd bought more recently was able to be switched over to AWIN with a reprogram. So because of that, the warranty is expiring at two different times. Some of it expires at the end of this year, and then the new equipment we bought expires at the end of the next year. So that's the purpose for a two-year contract. That way, it'll get everything expiring at the same time, and all the equipment will be on the same warranty schedule. Like I said earlier, Motorola is the only one that AWIN's authorizes to work on their system, and that's why they request for waiving the bid.
What questions do we have for chief on this? Exciting radio.
Important.
Yes, important.
Important.
All right. What public comment do we have on the Motorola Solutions Incorporated? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Any final comments from the council on this?
Might be worth twenty, this is a budgeted amount, it's not a surprise, it's not a change, it's not an adjustment, this is just...
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you, chief. Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. If there's not any other final comments, Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the mo, city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Thank you. When we upgraded our new radio system, some of the equipment we had that we'd bought more recently was able to be switched over to AWIN with a reprogram. So because of that, the warranty is expiring at two different times. Some of it expires at the end of this year, and then the new equipment we bought expires at the end of the next year. So that's the purpose for a two-year contract. That way, it'll get everything expiring at the same time, and all the equipment will be on the same warranty schedule. Like I said earlier, Motorola is the only one that AWIN's authorizes to work on their system, and that's why they request for waiving the bid.
What questions do we have for chief on this? Exciting radio.
Important.
Yes, important.
Important.
All right. What public comment do we have on the Motorola Solutions Incorporated? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Boudreaux.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a two-year contract with Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the total amount of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars plus applicable taxes for radio maintenance to the city's Motorola simulcast radio system.
Move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Yeah, I answered your question, yes.
That's good.
I do believe this is a wonderful opportunity for the city to receive these post trust, closure trust funds at, at no cost, as, as Alderman Boudreaux said to the city, three million dollars to get it done right. They have been studying it for a long time, and we're ready for it to be fixed.
I will add one other item, and that is that the city of Fayetteville will be the first city to receive post closure, um, funds, and, uh, their project caps are typically two million per fiscal year with the state. Because this project is over two million dollars, uh, part of the movement to get the deed restrictions in place, or so that they can begin the project and fund part of it from one fiscal year, and the remaining balance from their second fiscal year, which starts over again in July first. So that's the reason we're moving forward with this now, so they can begin work immediately.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to just thank the ADEQ, it's not only on this project, but also the, uh, electroplating, uh, place of the project there, that they worked with us on that, and we're able to use that now as park land, and, uh, it was a, kind of a hard process to go through, but we finally, uh, have accomplished that, and so I wanna thank ADEQ for working with the city on both of these projects.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions from council on this? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments on this? Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, number six. Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated, an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated, in the amount of two hundred and five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreational services for the youth and citizens of Fayetteville for 2013 contingent on the approval of funds in the 2013 Annual City Budget and Work Program. Kip?
And I would probably say that last little clause can be removed now because the budget has been passed.
Yeah, that's true.
Whereas providing quality recreational opportunities for the youth and citizens of our community is of mutual interest to the city of Fayetteville and the Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated, and whereas Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated and the city of Fayetteville have had a close working relationship for many years, and whereas this relationship allows for continuity of services vital to the efficient provision of recreational opportunities, and whereas were not for the services offered by the Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated, the city of Fayetteville would be required to assume the duty of providing staff, programming, promotion, and development for youth recreational services. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that the above circumstances make competitive bidding not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract between the city of Fayetteville and the Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreational services for the youth and citizens of Fayetteville for 2013. A copy of said contract marked exhibit A is attached here to and made apart hereof.
Okay. Con?
Connie Edmiston again. Since nineteen sixty-seven, our city has a, has had a wonderful partnership working with the Fayetteville Youth Center, which is known as the Boys and Girls Club, to offer recreational opportunities for our citizens. We do have a working agreement so that we avoid duplication of services, and we can do more for our citizens. Um, the Boys and Girls Club has also been designated as an emergency shelter should our city need one, and here tonight, we have Eric Schultz, who is the, uh, executive director of the Fayetteville Boys and Girls Club.
I just wanna thank you all for everything you've done for us over the years and continue to do. Uh, I feel like it's a great partnership between the city, uh, and the Boys and Girls Club, and, and as much as we can be a resource to the citizens, we're happy to do so.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council on this? Okay, any public comment on this? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rolls and go to the second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and Fayetteville Youth Center Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and five, uh, thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the youth and citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Any final comments from council?
I just wanna thank the Boys and Girls Club, but the town hall meeting there at the Boys and Girls Club in Ward Four the other day was just wonderful. We had great greeters at the door. They were so helpful.
And I'll echo that, Senator, it was a great time, and you do a great job out there, and thank you. We're very proud to have the Boys and Girls Club in Ward Four. It's, it's one of our five parks, I think. But I've read in our packet that we have six thousand four hundred memberships, and I think that's a testament to the good work that's done there, and I hope that citizens will continue to use it, and I'm glad we're supporting it. The price per participant is a dollar nineteen. It's so worth our investment, and maybe even more in the future, so thank you for your great work there.
That's right.
Did you put your shoes on?
Okay. Is there any other final comments from the council?
I cannot do that.
Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Number seven, Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013 contingent upon a balanced budget of the city council and...
I think we might've had a balanced budget. Whereas providing quality recreational opportunities to senior citizens of our community is of mutual interest to the city of Fayetteville and our Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, and whereas the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District is uniquely qualified to provide continuity of services vital to the efficient provision of recreational opportunities to senior citizens of Fayetteville, and whereas were not for the services offered by the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, the city of Fayetteville would be required to assume the duty of providing staff, programming, promotion, and development for senior citizen recreational services. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds the above circumstances make competitive bidding not feasible or practical, and therefore waives the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013. A copy of the contract marked exhibit A is attached here to and made apart hereof.
This is another great program. Con, great program.
The city of Fayetteville has had a partnership with, uh, our senior citizens since nineteen seventy-two to have recreational programs for them, and they've expanded now that we have the Walker Park, uh, Senior Activity and Wellness Center, and also at Hillcrest Towers, they provide these services. Um, the, the Walker Park Senior Ac- Activity and Wellness Center is also used as an emergency shelter for our citizens if it should need to be open, and tonight, we have Leanne Patterson Gisler, the executive director of the center there, here with us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members. It is truly an honor to be able to stand before you this evening, uh, not only representing the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, also known as the Fayetteville Senior Activity and Wellness Center, um, but also to be able to say, "Thank you." Um, it is my understanding, I am the new face there, but it is my understanding that there is a long history of cooperation and good deeds between the city and my organization, and I hope to continue that and to expand that. Um, I would like to make this humble request, and understanding that we anticipate significant growth in our numbers with our aging population, and I hope that you will be able to see that when we give our first quarter report in April. The other thing that we have been able to do, and we will continue to do with your support, is the expansion of activities. Um, right now, we currently have fifteen sessions of different exercise classes. I encourage all of you, if you have not been down to see us, to be able to come down, have lunch with us. We offer a hot lunch, Monday through Friday, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, um, and we will continue to expand those activities. We are looking at all kinds of options, um, that we can only do with the support that we receive from the city. Um, just a little bit of background that you all may or may not be aware of, is that the center does not receive complete funding from federal and state, so we are very acutely dependent on support from the city and from independent donations and other organizations. We are actually charged with raising fifty-one percent of our operating budget each year. So this is genuinely something we appreciate, and we desperately need, and we are so thankful. Again, we thank you for your support, and I encourage you to come visit us.
I, I do participate in some of those programs down there, and, uh, and I always, uh, great programs down there, and doing a great job down there. It's, uh, I don't remember, and I was down there at Christmas, and Sandra was down there.
You enjoy bingo.
And I really enjoy the bingo game. I don't ever win, but, uh, I really enjoy taking up space at a table. Anyway, what, uh, public comment do we have on this? Seeing now, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we suspend the rolls and go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
It's the fourth.
Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Suspend the rolls and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Suspend the rolls and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Suspend the rolls and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Suspend the rolls and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract between the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, and the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to provide public recreation services for the senior citizens of Fayetteville for 2013.
Final comments from council? Okay. Sarah?
Yes, so thank you, and, uh, let's see, Brenda and Bobby and I have brought this forward, uh, really recognizing that since nineteen ninety-nine, the city council representatives have not seen a compensation increase, uh, and recognizing that Fayetteville is behind peer communities and bitten in Washington counties, as well as other Arkansas communities, especially as you relate, uh, to population, and so as a metric, looking at, uh, the mayoral pay since ninety-nine, it, we looked at the three point eleven percent as a way to, to compare what it would be had it increased. Um, one of the reasons, I, I'll speak for myself as far as the reasoning, and I'll let them, um, speak then, of course, but, um, for me, this is, this is an important idea, and it's an important thing to consider, and I hope that the standing council members who will continue after this evening will think about, uh, future council members moving forward, um, as well, and recognizing that, that one, Fayetteville has a very active citizenry, and with high expectations of our council members, and that is important, and we need to, one, recognize that, and two, uh, compensate for that and support that. Uh, one of the things that, to, that really is important for me is that it's important for everyone in the community to consider running for city council, and a, uh, a, a lack of stipend or stipend, uh, should not be a barrier. So there is the need often to, a, as a person with a career, to take a va- take vacation, to take time away from work in order to fully achieve the objectives of being on the city council, and, um, if, if one is not able to support oneself as a result of that loss of time on, in work, uh, then, then that creates a hindrance to being able to serve the community, and that's what I feel like, an increase in the compensation, what it does is it takes that out, or potentially, or more, more possibly takes that out as a factor of whether or not one might choose to run, and, and so that's what I hope, um, folks will consider to this evening, and, and so, and also looking at, um, recognizing, recognizing that this is, this is an important role, and that it needs to be recognized as such, and, and that it is expected to be professional and, and spending a lot of time with citizens. Some of the things that, that council members do, I was asked, uh, by, I guess it was Joel to talk about some of these things, uh, earlier, so I thought I'd br- bring them up, um, here, but there's preparation for the meetings, reading the materials, uh, working with citizens, that's via email, or phone, or Facebook, or Twitter, or whatever means, um, is available. Uh, there's also visiting in person with, with citizens, whether it's at their location or at the coffee house. Uh, there's a, then, of course, every Tuesday, there's the council meetings, that's a full council meeting, or it's the agenda sessions, and then along with that are the committee members, and can, committee me- meetings, and earlier you heard Adella talk about the different committees that the council members are assigned to, and there are also ward meetings, or town hall meetings, and these kinds of events to help communicate to the citizens. There are tours of, of topics that are on the agenda, uh, and there's also, and I tell people, there's, there's the consideration time, how much time, um, that's spent, the thinking about these topics, and how, how one might, might, uh, vote in a certain way, or thinking about how I might explain this topic to citizens, and so it's, and when asked, "How many hours a week do you spend being on the council?", it's a very difficult thing to come up with, because, one, it varies, but also, it is a twenty-four hour position, you are recognized as a ci- as a city council member all day, every day, and, and, and so, and that's an important thing to recognize. So, since nineteen ninety-nine, this, this body has not seen an increase in compensation. Uh, I don't think, it's certainly not something you can make a living on necessarily, but it needs to be something, it should not be the, a hindrance in making a decision to run, and so that's why I think it's important.
Okay. Uh, I think you said, uh, a lot of good things. I, I agree with everything you said, and, um, it, it is, certainly does take a lot of time, it takes a lot of, um, sometimes anguish. You know, it's hard to, hard to get over, and, uh, so I, I think it's, definitely the compensation needs to be increased, and I really, um, appreciate that this was worded in such a way where it no longer is such a political thing to, to have to deal with, because I think over the years, we've all thought about trying to bring something forward, but, um, but it is difficult, you know, you don't have that many members leaving, you've still got some that have just came on, and, um, where the way it's worded now, it's just So, we tried to do that in our family, and if this is passed, this, we'll get to do it even more, I think, we'll have more to give back. But I'll support this for future council members. I'm fortunate to have a job with fair, very fair wages, and very fair benefit packages. But I do take vacation time, like you all do, I know from your jobs, those of us who work full-time. It's very hard to work full-time and do this job. And if you didn't have a supportive boss, if you didn't have fair wages and fair benefits, if you weren't willing to go into leave without pay, municipal league is an example. We take two days, two full days, or a day and a half to go together to the Arkansas Municipal League. Well, we have to take time off of our jobs from that, and last summer, that put me in leave without pay. I can, I could afford that. But I want the next person on this council to be able to go to municipal league and enjoy the time and, and be grateful for the, the city allowing that. So, thank you, aldermen, for bringing this forward.
And Lionel.
And Lionel. And I appreciate it very much, and I, I hope that if we, if we do pass this, that we'll all consider ways in which we can give back to the city we love, not only through our work, but through part of the way the city offers us money to give back.
Any other comments from the council? I believe, have we got a motion to go to the second reading?
I have, I have not heard one.
Did we hear from the public?
Have we not heard from the public?
Yeah, I think you asked.
Did I ask?
Oh, okay. Well, I spent a rose ago, or maybe go to the second reading.
We have a motion to second to go to the second. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 31.16 Alderman Compensation of the Code of Fayetteville to alter the monthly compensation received by members of the city council.
So, suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
Have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 31.16 Alderman Compensation of the Code of Fayetteville to alter the monthly compensation received by members of the city council.
Okay. Any final comments from the council? Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Number nine, Grantis Incorporated Contract, Paperless Agenda, An Ordinance Waiving The Requirements For Formal Competitive Bidding And Approving A Contract With Grantis Incorporated in a Total Amount of $32,325 for Fully Integrated Web Streaming And Paperless Agenda Routing Services.
Whereas the city has used Grantis Incorporated services related to online video streaming and internet publication of meeting agendas and supporting documents, and whereas the city requires an integrated solution with existing services to provide for paperless agenda routing and review. And whereas Grantis Inc. is the only solution which provides the degree of integration required by the city of Fayetteville, as well as being the only provider capable of upgrading its own pre-existing services, and whereas integrated services, including paperless agenda routing, will create much greater workflow efficiency and ease of access to agenda items by the public. Now therefore, it being ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines that an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirements for formal competitive bidding, and approves a contract with Grantis Incorporated in the amount of $32,325 to provide for fully integrated web streaming and paperless agenda routing services.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. I have the happy job of bringing you an opportunity to save money tonight. About a little over a year ago, I started having conversations with the city clerk and the chief of staff about what it would take for us to move our agenda item management and agenda item routing system off of paper. So, throughout this last year, I spent a lot of time doing research, different companies that offer these different services, and Grantis is the one that we selected for the reasons that Kit just iterated. What we'll find, if we implement this, these upgrades and these additions, is that most paper will be eliminated from the agenda item management routing process. These items will be automatically and electronically routed through the approval process, and that will save staff time, and sometimes confusion regarding the status of some of these items. Many agenda management functions can become automated, and that will save time in making things more consistent throughout the process. Staff and members of the council and the public will have more open and faster access to information regarding agendas, agenda items, and other information, without always having to pick up a phone or go see a staff member for that, that information. Staff and members of the council will have access to agenda items, no matter where they're located. Other upgrades proposed will provide a more informative and user-friendly website portal for legislative information, and for video of meetings, and improve the quality of the live streaming and video on-demand web feeds, and provide more video and audio options for viewers. We'll also work with a managed hardware solution that will save the city money on maintenance and future upgrades. We're asking for an ordinance waiving competitive bidding because Grantis Incorporated is the only company that can provide the breadth of services we're requiring, and provide upgrades to their own services and systems. We have enjoyed a very productive and supportive relationship with Grantis since 2007, and they have been our live internet streaming, video on-demand, and agenda publication service provider for the last five years, and we've had no issues with their service whatsoever. This item is budgeted for implementation in 2013, however, we're bringing it forward at this time because Grantis has offered a discount, they've offered to discount a portion of their service fees for 2013 if this agreement is signed before December 31st, which will save the city $4,800 in service fees next year.
Okay. What questions do we have?
Mayor, I'd just comment, I'd say this is kind of going along with what the chief of staff started a couple of years ago on streamlining, and look at ways to automate and to save manpower and time, and ultimately money, and I think where we can do this, we need to do it.
Now the short-term investment sort of long-term good, yeah. How are you looking? Any other questions?
No question.
Sure.
So, there was something about, we have to sign something before the end of the year? Does that mean that we need an emergency?
The contract, yes.
Do we need an emergency clause? No?
No, this is, you need, ordinances can take effect immediately, they do not if they're general and permanent ordinances. Since this is an ordinance that's only waiving competitive bidding and approving a contract, that is very specific, not a general ordinance, and it's not permanent, it's over and done with once, so therefore, it's effective, effective immediately.
Okay.
Without an emergency clause.
Okay, thank you.
That, that law was changed, it used to be every ordinance had to wait 31 days, but the state, about four years ago, changed the law on that, and, and said, "If it's not general and permanent, it's effective immediately."
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council.
Mayor, I do want to make a thank you comment to Fritz Geisler and the city clerk, Sandra Smith, who have been working for some time to look at ways to reduce our paper, our routing time, the reduction of lost items, monitoring where agenda items get stuck, and knowing when people are out of town, so that something can keep moving, so you don't have a lot of add-on items on a Tuesday. And it's their continued diligence in looking at that, that allows us to be effective, and your support and investments in technology. We're actually getting into the 20th century of the city of Fayetteville from a technology perspective, thanks to your leadership.
That's true, very true.
I just want to say, I did have a chance to call Mr. Geisler and talk about this, because I, you know, we, it's a little bit out of the ordinary not to take bids, and it seems like the potential that we would have as far as add-on services in the future with this specific organization and this layout is going to be something that we will want to consider also. The transparency and the efficiency for access for the public, as well as those of us that are maybe not as technically savvy, I also think is going to be a lot easier. So, again, I appreciate the work that, and the research that went into this, and the extra time, time that you gave to me, I needed remediation, I'll admit it. And I appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Any other questions? No public comment?
Move to suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
Have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Grantis Incorporated in the total amount of $32,325 for fully integrated webs, web streaming and paperless agenda routing services.
Okay.
Suspend the rules, go to the third and final reading?
Second.
Have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with Grantis Incorporated in the total amount of $32,325 for a fully integrated web streaming and paperless agenda routing services.
Any final comments from the council?
It's just really good news.
That it is. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
All right, number 10, Parking Deck Project Fund Resolution Approving A Budget Adjustment To The 2013 Annual Budget In The Amount Of $6,600,000 To Provide For The Construction Of A Parking Deck Facility In The Dixon Street Entertainment District And Creating A Parking Deck Project Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Last week, you approved the site selection for the parking deck. Over a year ago, you approved the issuance of bonds to pay for that construction. Mayor, at that point in time, told you he would come back, and until the site selection was made, we would not issue bonds. Based on the site selection, bonds have been issued, purchase agreements have been signed, we're going to generate about $5.8 million for the construction of the deck. It was presented to you last week, the estimated cost of that location would be $6.2 million, so we need an additional $400,000. What this resolution does is add in the 2013 budget, a transfer of $400,000, which will go into the construction fund, adding that to the 5 minute, 8, 5.8 million dollars from the bonds, that'll give us $6.2 million construction fund to move forward and pay for the project. Again, remember, this is budgeted, as we make the purchases, as we enter into the contracts, those come to you for approval, but this is to appropriate those funds and put the funding piece together.
What questions we have to call on this? Okay, what public comment do we have? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council.
Well, I would like to state, just say that it's a pleasure to get to vote on this, you know, regardless, I hope it'll pass, but I've, and I'm going to be supportive of it, and I, I, it's been a pleasure to be a part of the process, you know, difficult at times, and, you know, a lot of, a lot of work has gone into it, and, and this is, it's an important, important addition to our community, so, and a big investment that is important.
Well, I'm going to need a motion to second.
I would. That we go to the second reading?
Well, we're, this is a resolution.
I would move that we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass resolutions, any, any other final comments from the council?
I'll go ahead and call the roll.
All right. Why don't you do that?
No, all right.
Well, maybe you won't.
She won't be too.
No, it's okay.
She thought we'd talk about it a little bit more.
Got a motion to second.
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Number 11, Garver LLC Dixon Street Entertainment District Parking Deck Resolution Approving A Contract Amendment With Garver LLC In The Amount Not To Exceed $675,000 For The Design Of Dixon Street Entertainment District Parking Deck And Approving A Project Contingency Of $20,000 All Contingent Upon The Approval Of Funding In The 2013 Annual Budget. And so, David?
David Jurgens, Utilities Director. This is the design contract for the deck with Garver engineers and the team that brought forward the, the presentation and plan that we brought forward two weeks ago. The, this contract includes final design, does not include construction, observation, supervision. In that design process, the intent would be immediately upon, when, when this contract gets approved, if it does, would be to go forward with surveying and geotechnical work in more detail on that theater lot that is there adjacent to and on the same block as the Walton Art Center structure. We will be coordinating immediately with the Walton Art Center to integrate the design teams as we did through the process that occurred this summer. And then we would be bringing forward our first design schematics as soon as we can to bring forward to the city council and the staff for review, before we would then go forward through the planning process. This would be a large-scale development that will go through the normal planning process for the city of Fayetteville. At that point, we, there are provisions in the contract to go through that entire process, including city council review and public input. We anticipate having that council review and public input take place actually in one of the, one of the presentations we would do at an agenda session, we would then turn that into a public meeting, do the presentation as part of that public meeting, and take public comment at that time. Once that part is complete, and the planning commission, any modifications that need to be done to the design for the planning commission and meeting planning requirements, we then go forward for final design, and we expect that we would be going out to bid in late summer or very early fall.
All right. What questions do we?
I don't have any questions, I just wanted to state that I am also really proud of this, this parking deck and where it's located, and I think it's very exciting, I'm glad it's moving forward. I do kind of regret that I'm not going to be part of the next stages of it, but at least I was part of the beginning of it, so I can claim fame to that. But I think it is exciting, I'm glad we were able to work with Walton Art Center, and, and more or less get their blessing on that location too, and that was important, I felt like, because I think they're going to do some also exciting things in the near future. And I think their commitment, it just make, it just assures us of their commitment to do more things and expand the center here, which I think is very important, so, and will make the parking deck very needed, so.
And we're going to have public input sessions. I want, I want to make that really clear.
I'll be there.
We're going to do that, and you all will be involved as well, and so, I want that clear for the record also. Matthews, you have any questions on it?
No.
Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council.
Comment, Mayor?
Yes.
I was, I've always been for this, always, and liked the location, I liked everything about it, and I'll support this, I just, I did not like the add-ons, the, that we got added on, that we had to do in the same resolution. However, this is for the engineering, we got to move forward, and we're going to have public input, so.
One more time. Okay. What I plan on doing is that we will have, as I said, public input, and also, on this project, we will have monthly reports to the city council on the budget, where we are, just like we have, like we did the courts building over there, and everybody remembers that, so you will be kept up to speed on where we are at least every month, and it will be in an agenda session, we'll do more than that if you want to.
I have a question for Ron, maybe, or it's David, or, I'm not sure. I have a question about this, the design, and who will be on the team, and if they have attended the new and innovative designs in stormwater management, and what the plan is for that with this team.
Ron can more specifically answer the individuals, but yes, we do have both architects and engineers that have involved in, in innovative stormwater design, and, and we will be integrating what we can into this site, recognizing being on the crest and on the hill, we're taking away a lot of green space, so how we can reuse water in this facility, there's going to be a lot of drainage that comes off, and if it isn't coming off that hill right now, Ron can answer in more detail, if you wish, is this is a less stormwater challenging site than any of the others would have been, just because we're not hitting the storm rainages much, but Ron, if you want to come up. We are very aware of your concerns.
Thank you.
And I don't think they'll go away next month.
Ron Petrie with Garver. Obviously, on the civil side of it, the stormwater would be led by Garver, myself. I certainly had a lot of experience getting my feet wet doing this type of design. As David mentioned, that site has the green space, we, we don't have the, the area to handle open stormwater detention. So, it's, it's a great location, opportunity to, to do the reuse. We'll have lots of landscaping around it, so we certainly anticipate that we'll capture that stormwater, use it for irrigation, and, and that sort of situation, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Did I ask for public comment on this yet? Well...
I'm not sure.
Well, is anyone, any public comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring you back to the council, just to be sure.
I'd maybe pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Budrow.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hetty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Is there a Boy Scout group here tonight that I have, obviously, would you all like to tell us who you are, and would you, come up here, we want to recognize you all. Oh, you all come on. What group are you with, you might want to speak to us at the microphone?
You need to get back behind the microphone if you can.
Sorry, it's okay.
Hello there. Hello. We are Boy Scout Troop 555 Farmington.
All right. Well, thank you for being here. Okay. All right, the last order of business we have is number 12, amend 31.17, mayor's compensation of the federal code. An ordinance to amend 31.17, mayor's compensation of the federal code to allow mayor to waive in writing the salary adjustment required by B. Kit?
Bute ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One. At the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enacts a second sentence in section 31.17 B to allow mayor to waive the yearly adjustment for that year so that section B shall be as follows. Quote, "Section B, the salary shall be adjusted one time per year as provided above at the payroll period coincidental," I'm sorry, with, I think that's it, "with or following the January 1st. The mayor may waive for himself or herself this salary adjustment by filing such written waiver with the city clerk no later than January 3rd of the affected year." And I didn't write that first section. That's previous writing.
All right, pretty much speaks for itself. What questions may you have?
I got a comment on this. Mayor, you know, we're here, we've got somebody that worked and worked and worked to get the employee to raise, signed on tonight to get the alderman to raise, and I've got a good notion to vote against you on this deal.
You know what, we could, couldn't we? I hadn't thought about that.
You know what I'm saying?
I know. Thank you all very much. I just, well, I don't know what to tell you on that. Do we have any public comment on this?
I should answer it.
No, I, my reasons are, I've not been able to give the staff the pay plan that they should have, so my reasons are somewhat my own. And so, until I can do that, I'm not going to, I'm going to take salaries. When we do that, then I will, those are my reasons. They may not be good, but they're mine. Okay? All right.
Since I got called to clincher earlier today, I'm just going to make a quick comment that while I think all the staff and the council, we believe that everyone earns the money that they're being paid and puts in their time, and that's how we get top professionals, and the mayor is certainly no different, but when someone doesn't want to take an increase, and the ordinance doesn't give them that opportunity, as his chief of staff advising him, I don't want him breaking our ordinance, nor does the city attorney want him breaking our ordinance, and the only way that he is able to do that is to allow this change. So, and it doesn't restrict future mayors from being able to get their increases.
That's exactly right.
It allows him to do what he chooses to do in this time.
And I might point out, it is at this time, and my understanding is if the staff, I mean, if we start seeing the ability to increase the wages, then.
Then it'll be different.
Okay.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'd have to vote against you.
I need a motion to second.
One more question, mayor. Just to make sure, if that, following along Brenda's line of question, if the staff got there, would it take an enabling ordinance to bring back your pay, or can you?
I have no idea.
I don't believe, I believe his pay would, as I understand it, he is making a declaration each year for his, whether he accepts it or does not accept it, so if he met that level, he just wouldn't need to make a declaration to forego it.
That's kind of what I thought, okay, thank you.
And I can assure you, I like as fair as possible in these kind of matters. Thank you. I need a motion to second, go to the second reading.
So move.
Second.
I have a second and a motion go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Budrow.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hetty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 31.17, mayor's compensation of the Fayetteville Code to allow mayor to waive in writing the salary adjustment required by subsection B.
I need a motion to second, go to the third and final reading.
Let me, Senator Rose, go third and final.
Have a motion, second, go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Budrow.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hetty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
And order to amend section 31.17, mayor's compensation
of the Fayetteville Code to allow mayor to waive in writing the salary adjustment required by subsection B.
Any final comments from the council?
And I would like to add that I'm supportive of this because it does provide an enabling ordinance, but I do think, I do think that if this will come back at the budget time each year, I think it should really be considered, and I hope that future councils will really look at it, because it is, it is an important role, and we want to compensate it adequately.
I understand. Okay, any final comments? Okay, Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Gray.
Yes.
Budrow.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hetty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, council. Any announcements?
Yes, mayor, we have a couple of announcements. City offices will be closed this coming Monday and Tuesday for the Christmas holiday. No offices will be open to the public on the 24th and 25th of December. Solid waste services will run as normally scheduled on Monday, December the 24th, so if your trash day is Monday, put it out, it will get picked up. However, the division will be closed on Tuesday, December the 25th, for the Christmas holiday, and so the remaining schedule for the week will be if your service was Tuesday, it will be picked up Wednesday, if your service was Wednesday, it will be picked up Thursday, and if your service is normally Thursday, it will be picked up Friday. And for commercial trash customers who are serviced on Tuesdays, the schedule will be split, and you will have your containers emptied both Monday and Wednesday to cover that day. Just reminding the public that the next agenda session will be December the 27th, which is a Thursday, because the city is closed on Tuesday for the Christmas holiday. Reminding our current newly-elected city alderman that this will be their first agenda session, so to make sure to show up, because we don't, the current council who's departing doesn't come for that meeting, and so the new council members are present will be the first agenda for the meeting you will vote on. And the next council meeting will be also a Thursday due to the New Year's holiday falling on Tuesday, so that council meeting will be January the 3rd.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say something? I didn't say anything about to our aldermen or leaving, but I served 12 years with Brenda, and eight with Bobby, and four with Sarah, and I enjoyed serving with all of you, and I thought you all did a very fine job, you had different opinions on things, but you got along, and I really appreciated that, you helped make this council function very well, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I agree, I think the council gets along very well, and it's very pleasant to come to a city council meeting and work with each and everyone, and you will be, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And from the staff's perspective, I'd like you to take the lead of your senior departing council member, council member Budrow, who is also now a board of trustee member for the library. The other two, we would love to have your service on the city committee and your expertise available to the citizens, so I hope you'll continue other opportunities.
And I'd like to say that I think this council as a whole has been one of the finest councils that I have ever had the honor and privilege of serving with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want you to know, man, you all have been marvelous to work with, and I think the future council will be marvelous as well. But I just, I too want to thank you again for your service, and you all, and the council members that are part of it, I want to thank you.